A regularly scheduled Greer City Council meeting called and convened this evening, August the ninth, 2022. Having called the meeting to order, I'd like to ask Councilmember Jay Arrowood, if he would, to lead us into the Pledge of Allegiance and then an invocation for council. If you would, please stand and join us.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, united in God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let us pray. Dear heavenly Father, I thank you for giving me the opportunity to be here tonight to serve your city. Lord, you've blessed our city in so many ways. You've given us a council that has love in their heart for what they do, for the citizens, for the folks that, other folks with the city who serve our citizens. And I pray that you'll continue to bless us. I pray that as we do your work tonight, that all that we do and say will be in accordance to your will. And let us all have a servant's heart, that we may always serve our fellow man. Forgive us of our sins, in Jesus' holy name I pray. Amen.
Ms. Duncan, anyone to appear in public forum this evening?
No, sir.
Are you sure? All right. Thank you. Minutes of the council meeting last month, July the twenty-sixth, 2020, those are contained in your packet pile. Entertain a motion to receive, please.
So moved.
And a second. Any items of note for the clerk? Hearing none, Ms. Duncan?
Mr. Arrowood?
Yes.
Mr. Booker?
Yes.
Mr. Hopper?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mayor Daner?
Yes.
With that, we would like to spend some time doing special employee recognitions. This is something that this council supports, and we have done, I believe, as long as I've been here, done this. And we do this just not only as a matter of record, but also a matter of appreciation. We are always glad to recognize those folks who have reached a milestone in their service with the city, be that five years or 25 years or more. And we look forward to doing that this evening as well, and hope you will join me in helping celebrate these folks' tenure with the city. I'm going to ask Mr. Mayorman if he would to join me at the front, please.
So we did this by offering a resolution recognizing and commending our City of Greer employees, and it reads as thus: Whereas the City of Greer endeavors to recognize and reward its dedicated and faithful employees; and whereas Austin Chambers has served in the police department for five years, Lisa Gerardo has served in the Building and Development Standards Department for five years, Daniel Hanson has served in the fire department for ten years, Jason Johnson has served in the Public Services Department for ten years, Matt Tidwell has served in the fire department for ten years, Collette Polero has served in the court administration for fifteen years, Ricky Reddell has served in the Public Services Department for fifteen years, Jason Bash has served in the police department for twenty years, Lisa Godfrey has served in the police department for twenty years, Randy Williams has served in the fire department for twenty-five years, and David Seifert has served in the Administration Department for twenty-five years. Whereas these employees have served in a distinguished and professional manner, now we have therefore resolved that the City Council of the City of Greer, South Carolina, in a meeting duly assembled wishes to officially recognize and commend these employees for the distinguished and dedicated service for which they have performed. We have further resolved that the City of Greer hereby rewards these dedicated employees with a certificate of appreciation and an administrative date off with a approved this ninth day of August 2020. If you would come forward when we call your name, and if you'll stay up here for just a minute so we can get a picture, we would appreciate it. Lisa Guerrero. You'll stay with us.
Daniel Hanson. And Jason Johnson.
That's my go-to guy.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it.
Jason Bash.
Jason, thank you, sir. Appreciate it.
Appreciate your service. Appreciate it.
David Seifert.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
You didn't miss anybody, did you?
Thanks, sir.
All right. Let's give these folks a big round of applause.
Yes.
All right. Appreciate it.
Let's move to the administrators' report. Mr. Mayorman?
that were recognized tonight. We have some very hard-working employees that were honored tonight, and even a couple firefighters. But in all seriousness, I do appreciate all that they do. Just a reminder, I want to thank everybody who participated in the Stuff a Cruiser event, which was held Saturday, this last Saturday, August the sixth. The donations of those back-to-school items were very much appreciated, and of course, very much needed and helpful for our local students. The Greer Civics Academy is, we're taking applicants for the Greer Civics Academy. Registration is open now through August 23rd. Contact the city at neighbors@cityofgreer.org via email if you're interested in that, or just call 479-0964 if you're interested. The Citizens Fire Academy is also accepting applications for its free nine-week course to provide citizens a better understanding of the fire department and its operations. These sessions will be held on Thursday evenings from 6:30 to 9:30 and begin on September 22nd. We will be accepting applicants until September 1st. Just a reminder, school starts back in Greenville County on Monday, so kind of keep your eyes peeled for a little heavier traffic, buses stopping, and kids crossing streets. The food truck rollout is August the 18th from 5:00 to 8:00, so bring your blankets and chairs and join us out here. This event is sponsored by Greer's CPW here out at City Park. We will be having a blood drive this Thursday, August 25th, from 8:00 to 5:00. We're trying to get our employees to donate blood as blood supplies are low. And finally, just a reminder, if you see a bunch of folks dressed up like Robin Hood or Dragons or the other costumes I think I saw last year during the Renaissance Fair, that will be September 10th from 10:00 to 8:00. So if you're in the mood for some mead or turkey legs or a little bit of both, you can have your fill here at City Park. So, Mr. Mayor, unless there's any questions, that concludes my report.
Thank you, sir. Council will move to appointments of boards and commissions this evening from the Accommodations Tax Advisory Committee. We've been notified by Erin Williams that she has resigned. Her term expires 12/31/2023. And Barbara Bahily has also resigned. Her term expires also on 12/31/23. You should have at your desk two bio sketches for representatives to fill those two positions, which was the hospitality industry and the cultural organization representative. Mr. Seifert joins us this evening for that discussion. The floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, Mayor and council. First, I would like to introduce one of our newest members in the finance staff. I don't think I've had the opportunity to, or even have not taken the opportunity, to introduce her to you formally. You may have had an opportunity to see her in the business office downstairs, but this is Kenna McLarty-Wilson, been with us about six months, and has come to us from the South Carolina School for the Deaf and Blind, and supervises and manages our business office downstairs, and then also serves as the staff coordinator for the Accommodations Tax Committee. So, I'd like to welcome her here. It's now six months in, and introduce her to you.
Thank you.
So the rest of the information you provided, you kind of took my introduction, so. She's kind of like, oh, there we go. So as you said earlier, with Barbara Bowley resigning, we bring to you for acceptance of a nomination coming from staff for Katie Joyner to fill the cultural organization representative slot. She works at Summit Media in Greenville and currently serves as the Secretary for the Greer Cultural Arts Committee, or City Council. The second nominee is James Vogon, and he is a owner of a local bed and breakfast named Whispering Willow Inn. And looking at his sketch, he has previously served on the Greer Planning Commission. And Kenna has worked diligently to pull these together and bring them to you, and tells us that both of them are excited to be able to serve in this capacity, should you wish to approve them tonight.
Thank you, sir. With the advice and introduction from our folks in, with the Accommodations Tax Advisory Board, I'll entertain a motion to receive the nomination of James Vogon for consideration of an appointment to the Accommodations Tax Advisory Board Committee.
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Any questions, comments, or concerns in that regard? Hearing none, Ms. Duncan?
Mr. Arrowood?
Yes.
Mr. Booker?
Yes.
Mr. Hopper?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mayor Daner?
Yes. Council, upon the recommendation of staff, I'd like to nominate, or ask that we nominate Katie Joyner for a position on the Accommodations Tax Advisory Committee. Do I hear a nomination?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Floor is open for any discussion. Questions or comments? Hearing none, Ms. Duncan?
Mr. Arrowood?
Yes.
Mr. Booker?
Yes.
Mr. Hopper?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mayor Daner?
Yes.
As a, I'm sorry, as a second matter, we've had a request from the committee members that due to their schedules, they would request authorization to hold meetings in an official fashion through Zoom. So I request that tonight of you as council to authorize and approve us to hold Zoom meetings in an official capacity for the Accommodations Tax Committee.
Upon the request from staff, I'll entertain a motion that meetings for the Accommodations Tax Advisory Committee include as an official meeting those meetings held via Internet, particularly on Zoom. I'll entertain a motion to receive.
So moved.
And a second. It will fail without a lack of a second?
Depends on discussion through the grant process and application process, and then when we get the reports back, and then authorization of those funds. But anywhere from two to, you know, five or six times a year.
And there are how many members on this board?
Seven.
You just need a majority to conduct business?
Yes, sir.
Do you have any issues?
Yes. Yeah, we've, two of the lodging representatives in the last, what, three, four, five meetings have made it to one or two meetings each. This last meeting, we tried to hold two weeks ago, one person showed up. We had, we'd originally tried to schedule through Zoom knowing we were coming here, and it got changed at the request of one of the members to an in-person meeting, and only one person showed up to that meeting, and it wasn't the person that requested the in-person meeting. So we're just trying to accommodate their schedules for the businesses that they run, to be able to hold in a meeting in a fashion that they are able to come to more readily.
For the purpose of further discussion, I'll entertain a motion for a second, or a second?
I'll second.
Floor is open for discussion.
These are public meetings, correct?
They can be. I mean, yes, by law, they're public meetings, yes, sir.
And they're published and so on, just like, okay.
If this passes, could we be notified when they're going to happen so we could tune in also?
Sure, absolutely.
Are you pretty confident that this will remedy the attendance issue?
We believe so. When we were trying to schedule it, again, knowing we were coming tonight, they all agreed but one. Now, we weren't able to hold it yet, so we're hoping so, yes, sir.
So you can't, you can't for a 12-month period lay out the five or six meetings and the dates and say pencil them in?
They are all held around March. The way the process works is we go through the fiscal year, we close the books, we have our audit, and when the audit is complete, then we know the amount of funds that are allocated to the ATAX Committee to be awarded, and that is subsequent to December. So we release the applications after the first of each calendar year, and then we get together with the committee in March and April to go through the applications. And then in the April timeframe is when we come to you to approve their recommendations. So everything is held in that March to April timeframe.
Others? Comments? Questions? Discussion? Ms. Duncan?
Mr. Arrowood?
No.
Mr. Booker?
No.
Mr. Hopper?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mayor Daner?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Council items of old business, the first of which is second and final reading of ordinance number 45-2022. This is an ordinance to change the zoning classification of property owned by Up Country Cottage Incorporated located on Memorial Drive from RM1 residential multifamily to RM2. Mr. Macmahan joins us for that discussion. Any new or additional information, Mr. Macmahan?
No, sir.
With that, I'll entertain a motion to receive for the purpose of discussion.
So moved.
Second. Floor is open for discussion. Questions? Comments? Hearing none, Ms. Duncan?
Mr. Arrowood?
Yes.
Mr. Booker?
Yes.
Mr. Hopper?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mayor Daner?
Yes. Council, another item of old business we have is the second and final reading of ordinance number 46-2022. This is an ordinance to change the zoning classification of property owned by Julio Munoz located at 226 East Church Street from RM1 to R5. Any new or additional information in that regard, Mr. Macmahan?
No, sir.
With that, I'll entertain a motion to receive for the purpose of discussion.
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Floor is open for discussion. Questions? Comments? Hearing none, Ms. Duncan?
Mr. Arrowood?
Yes.
Mr. Booker?
Yes.
Mr. Hopper?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mayor Daner?
Yes. Council, let's move to items of new business, the first of which is our first ordinance tonight, 43-2022. This is an ordinance to provide for the annexation of a property and a portion of property owned by LEM Holdings LLC located on Old Highway 14 in East Phillips Road by 100% petition and to establish a zoning classification of I-1 for said properties. Comes to us this evening from staff. By show of hand is the owner of this property or representative of the owner of the property here with us this evening. Thank you, sir. If we have questions, we'll direct them to you. I'll entertain a motion to receive 43-2022 for the purpose of discussion.
So moved.
Second. Motion and second. Floor is open for discussion. Mr. Macmahan, excuse me, I overlooked you. How about information, please, sir?
Yes, sir. Here is an aerial view. As you stated, this is for a portion of a parcel and a parcel on East Phillips. Here's the aerial view. This property is located within the airport environs. Here is the current zoning map, that kind of orangish color you see, that property is on DRD. It is the old bank site across from Village at Palom Hospital that was recently brought in for a DRD for a flex space. And here is the future land use map. We are proposing mixed employment, and here's a street view. This will go to Planning Commission for a public hearing on the 15th, and we will bring you back that recommendation at that time. And that's all that I have, sir.
For the purpose of discussion, I'll entertain a motion to receive.
You have a motion.
We did.
I got a hit to myself. Okay, yeah, we're already there then. Okay. Floor is open for discussion, excuse me.
One question I have. How does the environs affect the I portion, the industrial portion of this project, or does it?
So what they would do is once they actually, before they're able to get a grading permit or a building permit, they have to get approval from the airport environs. We're kind of, once they submit to us, we let them know they have to go to airport, get that approval. Once we get that approval, and they go through all civil and building review, we release permits.
Excuse me, what are the plans now for that?
For that parcel, I believe the applicant has a building that he's wanting to put up, but I don't believe he has a tenant at this time.
Where houses or?
I believe if we can get him, he could.
Sir, would you like to address council about the intended use of the property?
Sure.
If you'll come to the podium, if you'll give us your name and just an address as a matter of record, we would appreciate it, sir.
All righty.
Thank you. My name's Randall Bentley. I reside at 106 Latour Way in Greer, and so I'm with Lee &amp; Associates. And so what we intend to do here is build a 40,000-square-foot industrial building that would be either, it will be within the zoning, so it could be either distribution or light manufacturing. And so that's our plan. To go just one step further, the next thing on your agenda is beside this property, and that is a company, is it German company?
Yes, sir.
Yes, the Winker Company, and they would be beside us. We've cooperated with them to get in the city, zone the same, and so therefore, both of those developments need sewer, and that's why we're standing here and asking for this. Be glad to ask any other questions.
Questions, Mr. Bentley?
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Appreciate your time. Floor is open for discussion. Questions? Comments?
Randall, I noticed there's a church that's back behind this property. It's a recreation space, and different things like that. What type of buffering or any type of requirement is there? I don't think that parcel's in the city. Is that correct?
Yes, sir, you're correct. So the buffering, they will do some type of either landscape buffering or a privacy fence along the rear property line. I believe there's a creek that runs through here, so I believe they may just leave kind of the vegetative area there alone and not disturb it. But they will be required to screen.
And the Winker property he's talking about, where is that on this map?
It is this property right here. That's ordinance 44.
By the way, the church is selling us the 10-foot strip, so they know exactly what's going.
Okay.
That's the Pelham Baptist, Pelham Church. Is it the Pelham Church? Is that the name of the church?
Pelham Baptist Church, yes, sir.
Yeah. And I'm assuming the dotted line is the county, the?
Yes, sir, that's the dividing line, yes, sir.
Ms. Duncan?
Mr. Arrowood?
Yes.
Mr. Booker?
Yes.
Mr. Hopper?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mayor Daner?
Yes. See if I can get it right this time. First, reading of ordinance number 44-2022. This is an ordinance to provide for the annexation of a certain property owned by Winker Incorporated located on East Phillips Road by 100% petition and to establish a zoning classification of I-1 for said property. Mr. Macmahan?
Yes, sir. As you stated, this is for an annexation for I-1. This is the parcel located just above ordinance 43. Here is current zoning. This will be similar site as the I-1. Here's the future land use map, and kind of here is the street view. What this company does is they build self-contained paint booths and then sell them to manufacturers, so they're looking at expanding into this region with that. Planning Commission will hold a public hearing on the 15th for the zoning of the property. That's all the information that I have at this time, but I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have.
By show of hand is the owner of the property or representative of the owner of the property here this evening?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, sir. So noted. With that then, for the purpose of discussion, I'll entertain a motion to receive.
So moved.
Second. Motion and second. Floor is open for discussion.
That strip is what makes them contiguous in this scenario. The one we just brought in is connected to this piece.
Yes, sir. This 10-foot strip gets them contiguous here, comes to this parcel. We kept those two together since it's the same property owner, and then that gets them contiguous here.
I'm sorry, where is the 10-foot strip?
It's right here. It's the red line that kind of goes from Old Highway 14 down.
And that's where, I'm assuming, the sewer line would pick up?
I believe it's actually going to pick up on East Phillips. I think it's going to go down the road.
It would. I can answer that.
Sure. If you want to come to the podium, that'd be great. If you would, give us your name and address as a matter of record, please, sir.
Sure. My name's Alex Zunt with Zunt Engineering, 301 North Main Street, Greenville, South Carolina. Sewer is actually going to be at the bottom of East Phillips, right about here. It's about a 900-foot run. We couldn't go this way because you actually go down and then back up, and you'd end up with a pump station, and it would be kind of costly. And Winker is a supplier to BMW. They actually provide all, they build and design the paint booth, and this area is going to be all the equipment that's needed to continuously run it. They're going to have about a 40,000-square-foot building with trucks and it's going to supply most of the filters and everything that are in the paint booth for BMW. to supply most of the filters and everything that are in the paint booth for BMW and for Volvo. That's another one of their suppliers.
Questions? Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Counsel? Discussion? Comments? Questions? Hearing none, Ms. Duncan.
Mr. Airwood?
Yes.
Mr. Booker?
Yes.
Mr. Hopper?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert? Mayor Danner?
Yes. Counsel, first reading of ordinance number 47-2022. This is an ordinance to amend the City of Greer zoning code ordinances by amending Article 8, Table 8-1, Permanent Freestanding Sign Regulations to Allow for a Pylon-Style Street Sign Not Listed with Speeds Between 30 and 40 Miles an Hour for Buildings Over 200,000 Square Feet of Gross Floor Area. Mr. McMahon?
Thank you, Mayor and counsel. So this request, we have a building that is just under a million square feet, 911,000 square feet, and they requested to put a pylon sign up. That kind of mirrors what their corporate signage is. The way the speed limit kind of limits the way our signage is done, speed limits between 30 to 40 miles per hour does not allow for a pylon sign. When the ordinance was written back in 99, I don't think it took into account for the large scale of the buildings. So what staff is proposing is to kind of amend that and allow for a pylon-style sign up to 20 feet, similar to what others only, other speed limits allow for buildings over 200,000 square feet. That's typically our larger industrial sites. A lot of these are built on county roads or roads that are being annexed in, and they typically have 30 to 35 mile-per-hour speed limits. If the speed limit where this building was located was 40, they would be fine to, to have that pylon sign. This will go to Planning Commission in September, and I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have.
For the purpose of discussion, I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second. Have a motion and second. Floor's open for discussion.
Why is that, just from my education, why is the speed limit, why does that dictate signage?
I, I do not know. In the UDO, that is something we are, we're looking at addressing.
And a pylon sign is?
Those are typically single-pole signs where the sign is on top.
Okay. So, the sign, are, are, are those signs limited in height?
Yes, sir. This one would be limited to 20 feet.
Based on?
Just based on other pylon signs that are allowed. So 40 to 50 miles per hour allows for a 20-foot pylon sign. We felt that we would just mirror that. Currently, a monument sign in this, this speed limit would be allowed to go up to 12 feet.
And a monument sign, tell me.
So, yes, sir, it has like architectural features at the base of it, you know, it's got architectural features on the side, so the sign's basically inlaid into the, the sign structure.
Others?
For, for this particular situation, I think of lower-speed roads, I think of lower volume, lower ADT. Is there any benefit? I mean, if you put it on a pylon, usually you want folks looking at it, but if you're on a lower-speed road, it might have a lower ADT. What's the point of having it on a pylon than just having a 12-foot sign? What's the benefit?
I, I believe it's more for the corporation, that's kind of their corporate logos and the way they.
In this case, they're looking for consistency across what they already do and have.
Yes, sir. They're, they're, they have a set sign that they use at all of their facilities, and they just want to use it at this site.
Are we kind of going off on another trail, but is the signs, they're going to, I know we've already addressed some things, but there's going to be any UDO regarding signs, but will it get down into the weeds about the 30 to 40 miles per hour and all this other stuff?
Our hope is to do away with the speed limit and base it on the actual building and, and what type of zone it is. So if it's a neighborhood commercial, you can't have a huge 30-foot pylon sign that's all lit up. We want it to kind of blend with that neighborhood. So we will address that and kind of remove some of the speed limits out of there.
Similar to what we're talking about here.
Yes, sir.
Others? Ms. Duncan?
Mr. Airwood?
Yes.
Mr. Booker?
Yes.
Mr. Hopper?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mayor Danner?
Yes. Last item for us this evening, counsel, is the first and final reading of Resolution Number 15-2022. This is a resolution allowing the City of Greer to continue the cooperative agreement with the County of Greenville and the Greenville County Redevelopment Authority in order to maintain urban county status with the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development. Any additional information you'd like to add to that, Mr. Merriman?
No additional information, Mayor.
Comes with the recommendation from staff, I'll entertain a motion to receive.
So moved.
And a second, and a second. Floor's open for discussion. Questions? Comments? Hearing none, Ms. Duncan.
Mr. Airwood?
Yes.
Mr. Booker?
Yes.
Mr. Hopper?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mayor Danner?
Yes. Counsel, we have no items in executive session this evening. Stand adjourned.